Board member appreciation.
I didn't know either.
I did write them all down the other day.
Appreciation note?
Yeah, yes, I did. I wrote them all down and I did not include that one.
Now you gotta add all the days.
It depends on how many days. One site will have them.
What's six o'clock?
Okay, I have six o'clock. We're going to go ahead and call this meeting to order. First off, I'd like to recognize how many people we have sitting out here and how excited that makes me to see all of y'all's smiling faces. Thank you for coming. We are going to take a roll call. Mr. Billy Holland and Ms. Tracy Strichett, Ms. Jamie Jackson, and Mr. Kyle Glover, we are all in attendance. If everybody would please rise for the invocation and stay standing for the pledge. I'm gonna ask Mr. Billy Holland if he'll lead us.
God, thank you for bringing us here tonight. Please grant the superintendent and board wisdom as we make decisions for our students in Otterville County. Thank you for allowing us to live in a community that has so many citizens, parents, educators that care deeply about our educational system. Just send me a prayer. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, are we all ready? Okay. Okay. The first item on the agenda is approval of the agenda. Do we have a motion to approve?
I move to approve the agenda.
I second.
Okay. All in favor, say.
Aye.
Aye, aye, aye. Yep. We're still trying to figure out which one we're gonna do. Okay. As the agenda is approved, we'll move on to receivers information. Do I have a motion to receive? Or do I have a motion to receive as information?
I move to receive information.
Or a motion to receive, yeah.
All right. We have one item on the receivers information tonight. Of course, we'll be discussing others for our, during our work session. But we have a capital projects update. We'll talk more about some of these, the kindergarten building during the work session. But Ms. Thompson, do you have any updates?
The ACTC addition is moving along pretty good. There's some sheet rock. Farmers are upping in, electricians are upping in. So that's moving along pretty quickly now. Exterior canopies are starting to go up. So it's starting to look like a life ability. We'll get a chance to ride out there, Teddy Will, he'll give you a call. Tool year round. It's starting to come together. The gas pumps out at the bus garage, it's about ninety-eight percent complete. There's some electronic stuff waiting on still. We were telling those we want permission yesterday. We're telling them we have permission today. They're still not finished with them. So hopefully by the end of this week, they will be finished. And then the early learning center, they're stripping topsoil and moving dirt pretty rapidly. Got them out there this week. It's changing a lot. It's starting to look like a construction site. So they're getting the dirt moved. It's starting to.
Question? Okay. That's all on receivers information. Consider for.
Okay, so now we'll move on to the consider for approval consent agenda. These items are kind of housekeeping items. If there's... Do I have a motion to consider for approval of the consent agenda?
I make a motion to approve.
I second.
So are there any questions or comments about anything that's on the consent agenda?
May I address a couple?
Sure, yes.
On number seven, the Otterville Elementary Gym Floor, that is a replacement. It's actually a vinyl tile. It's not a wooden floor. They have several, not several, a lot of tiles that are missing. This actually probably should have been done several years ago. This is on, it's an agreement with the architect to do a bond because it actually will be a public works. So that's why, I mean, not a bond, a bid. And then number eight is along the same lines. It'll be a public works, but it's, we're doing a system-wide bid for tile. Felt like we could get a better price and that way we don't have to bid out individuals. It'll be for an extended period of time.
What are the timelines in these?
Ms. Wilder?
It was June one of this year to July thirty-first of next year. We're trying to get two full summers. There's a lot of work needs to be done over summertime. So we're trying to include two full summers in the bid because some rooms will have to be done by summertime.
That will be replacing carpet with tile. We're using Esser mitigation money. And they really, carpet tends to be an allergen and collects things. So that will be replacing carpet with the tile in the areas that we need it.
Two questions in that. That's for all the projects? It's Esser?
Yes, with that bond. Yes. Now, some of the, no, some of the schools could use it, could utilize the bond because it is a system, I mean, a system bid. So they could use local funds and do whatever they want to.
Do they have to use it within the year?
Within that same timeframe.
Yeah.
What they're doing now is everybody's doing individual bids and everything. It's extremely time consuming.
Yeah.
Work to run to, work to repair.
Okay.
And that's the same thing with number nine, the painting agreement. That's just a system-wide standard cost, basic, you know, choice of paint. Again, if the school's want additional things painted or whatever, then they would, could utilize the bid as well. And it's the same time period, correct?
Yes. And both of those include the labor, you know, the material and the labor. That's one of the things, you know, you can buy the materials off the bid list, but there's no labor involved there. So we're bidding the labor and the material. So the thing is a little different.
Ms. Superintendent, how does, how does that affect, I know we have a paint crew that has operated around here for a very long time and kept up our schools. Is this to replace that? Is this an addition?
Well, they actually didn't do it last year.
I'm sorry, now?
They didn't have interest last year.
Okay.
So this is kind of, no, they will not. This will be a company that would be doing that. But we didn't have any interest in doing it last year.
Okay.
And then number ten, as you see, is the school calendar. And we're gonna adopt a calendar for the next two years. And usually we just do one year at a time, but this one will be for two years so that people can plan, you know, further in advance. And I think that's a pretty great idea. So that school calendar should be out shortly. And if there are no other questions, we've... Everybody would like to vote, say aye. Or if everybody's in agreement, say aye.
Aye.
Okay. Okay. Now, we'll move to the consider for approval.
Board members, I recommend approval of the personnel, of the personnel action items as presented. Oh wait, we need to, I'm sorry, we need to approve the consent, the consent agenda. No, we've already done that.
Oh, you did that, yes.
Yes, okay. I recommend approval of the personnel action as presented.
I move to approve the personnel action as presented.
Second motion.
Okay. If there are no other questions, say aye.
Aye.
Board members, I recommend approval of the academic alignment team as presented.
I move to accept the academic alignment team as presented.
I second.
Okay. Are there any other questions?
I have a, I have one question. Is this in addition to elementary? Has that already been done?
Elementary is already in place.
Okay, gotcha.
Okay. Any other questions? Okay. Everybody's in agreement, say aye.
Board members, I recommend approval of the e-learning day as presented. This is really a management issue. It gets the kids out of the building on a virtual day. That's not testing, which they tend to cause some discipline issues at times because they're sitting in a room all day long. You know, with really nothing to do, just busy work. So they will be on virtual learning. If they're not on grade testing, right now it's ACT. And.
This particular day will be ACT.
It's just ACT.
So that's only our eleven graders.
So all the high schools will be on the same day. And that's just, virtual learning will be nine through twelve.
Okay.
All elementary, you know, and middle school and junior high school will be in session.
Okay. Even like at Billingsley and Otterville?
Yes.
I make a motion to approve.
Do what?
I make a motion to approve.
Make a motion to approve.
I'll second.
Okay. If everybody's in agreement, say aye.
Aye.
Board members, I recommend approval of the high school chill water piping agreement. What this is, is a clarification. We had to rebid it. Remember, we rejected the bid at a previous meeting. And this is giving Mr. Wilder permission to proceed with the bid and the other, the other project, or the other aspects of it.
Okay. Any questions?
So is this?
This is an amendment to my agreement that increases the amount of the, it increases the estimated construction amount to one point eight million. It was previously one million. And that is, if you, you may not remember the figures we talked about at the last meeting, but essentially that's enough to do a two-pipe system. The four-pipe system was gonna be more, but we did talk about going ahead and bidding the four-pipe system, an alternate bid for a four-pipe system. So right now, the plan would be to do the base bid of a two-pipe system, an alternate bid for a four-pipe system. But they would not, we would not be bidding the air, new air conditioning or new air handler units that we had previously bid. So that would just be way beyond the budget. I do wanna tell you that while I'm working with the engineer, we're looking at an alternative approach. What we found was that the really costly thing was the piping, the new piping. So we are looking at an alternative solution that would not install new piping. It would essentially look at putting new, new air handlers and, and new rooftop units, condensers to serve those. And we would be using the latest technology on that, the variable refrigerant flow. It's basically a large heat pump. So that's, he's looking at that. We won't, we hadn't made any decision yet on it, but we are looking at that. And that would give you a complete new air conditioning system, much like we will, you know, we have bid before for three point three million dollars. So, but it's much cheaper. It would be much cheaper because of that high cost of the piping. That's where all our high cost was coming in. So we're just, that will be an alternative solution that we probably will want to try to bid. With Jay, I've talked, talked to Jay about it. Jay thinks it's a good thing to do. We've talked to some contractors, actually the two contractors who bid the project before. And they, they think that's probably a good, good approach. So, and our engineer is the one that proposed it. So that's where we are with that.
What would be, like timeframe wise, of bidding this out of, of seeing if that is an option of being able to just get started by the summer?
They're trying, they're trying to get it bid by next, by February still. So that's the plan. Bid it by February. That way we, we did, the bidders told us that we could get those air handlers that we had bid in December. We could get them in four months. Well, that makes it pretty tight. But I mean, it may be doable. We think it's maybe doable.
So if I'm understanding correctly, then it makes obsolete the two-pipe and even the four-pipe system that would be bid. This would be something completely different?
It would be bid as alternates. But I'm thinking that the base bid would probably be this alternate system where we would put all new, new air handlers in and new variable refrigerant flow condensers on the roof. I will mention to you that the original building design had condensers on the roof.
Right.
And that was before, then, then we, back in the nineties, I think it was, maybe the early two thousands, we took those units off the roof and put a chiller in. Well, now this would, there's a two-hundred-ton chiller there, which we would be able to, wouldn't, wouldn't need anymore with this system. But there is a gymnasium there that has two, eighty-two-ton chillers that we could, that are now getting to be about twenty-five years old. And so we're thinking that might be a good place to use that chiller.
Okay.
That's, that's our thinking right now. And if it's, if y'all approve this, this amendment, we'll move forward. We'll work with Mr. Ted Moore, Mr. Thompson. We'll move forward with this.
Very good.
So we'll absolutely, hopefully absolutely bid in February.
Very good. Thank you for that. That, that's very good news for those of us who have been up there and had the tour of that.
One thing we, I didn't mention is we would take out, that we don't wanna leave that old piping in there. So part of that project would be to remove that two-pipe system that's there now.
Perfect, perfect. And that'll free up, from my knowledge, that'll free up some space, maybe for some janitorial closets and different things where, where all that will come out of, Jay?
Not necessarily. As far as they're using now, it'll still be used. Where the, the boilers at, that could, that could come out.
Okay. Okay, very good.
And then those big chillers are in the parking lot beside the lunchroom.
Right, right.
There is a thirty-ton chiller there that would stay there. It's used mostly for the kitchen. So that thirty-ton chiller would stay there.
Okay, okay.
Okay. If everyone is in agreement, say aye.
Aye. Aye.
Board members, I recommend approval of the Prattville High School operable wall replacement agreement. That's a big fancy term for a movable wall between two classrooms, not just a regular folding door that's a heavy duty like you would see at a conference center, that, that type of door.
There any questions? No? Okay. If everybody's in agreement, say aye. Aye.
Motion.
Oh, a motion to, sorry. Sorry, a motion to accept this agreement.
So moved.
I second.
Okay, all right. If everyone's in agreement, say aye.
Aye.
Board members, I recommend approval of the YMCA ACBOE Summer Learning Program Plan as attached. We're very excited about this.
I make a motion to approve.
I'll second.
Okay. Are there any questions?
I just have a comment. I would just like to say thank you to David Lewis and the partnership that I know this school system has with YMCA. And we look forward to carrying that forward, but we also look forward to strengthening that and building upon that. Thank you for partnering with us in that.
Thank y'all for your consideration and for allowing us to be a part of the privilege to work with y'all.
Thank you.
So I do have a comment. I guess a question and a comment. Will this camp work? My understanding is it'll work in collaboration with the literacy camps, Ms. McNaider? Yes. And allow families to have peace when they're at work? You know, they can't pick their children up at noon.
There will be, and Ms. Thiel may wanna elaborate, there will be limited seats because of the capacity that the Y is able to house. But we're, we're reaching out to our Otterville School students and bringing them in to offer those opportunities to them and also to our Billingsley students and bringing them over to Pine Level Elementary School during the summer learning program to offer those opportunities to them as well.
So will transportation be provided from Otterville and Billingsley? And is there a chance in the future to expand if we have limited seating? If there's a waitlist?
Probably because we're using ARP funds to do this, it's allowing us to expand and probably we're going to have to start back using title funds like many of our other surrounding districts. So we might have to go to a model where we might only serve our third graders because we're hitting that literacy act because we won't have those funds to do it. But right now, we're able to do K through five because of our ARP funds. But in the future, that was our mindset when we met, probably trying to figure out to hit certain groups. But that was one of our biggest things. We wanted to bring in our Otterville students so they could experience the Y and also our Billingsley students so they can experience the Y.
So we have two summers till 2024? Or is it just this one summer?
We have two summers because the ARP Esser three funds, they will end September of 2024. And then after that, that's when we'll start looking at possibly using our Title One funds to do this.
But as you know, with the numeracy act coming on board as well, we should be able to carry that out with our, to our fifth graders once that all comes into play as well.
Good. I hope we can do it all the way down to kindergarten.
David?
I was just gonna say, we're, you know, this is a new venture for us as far as expanding what we're already doing. And we don't wanna take away, you know, we've been serving families each summer for, for many, many years. And so we have a number of people that depend on us already. And we didn't wanna totally knock out those people as well. So we're, this is, the, the seats that are in our proposal are new seats to our program. We know that there's gonna be some overlap. And so whatever excess capacity we have due to that overlap, we'll, we'll take on as many students as we can. And my hope is that we'll find our field with this, this summer and then the following summer be able to do even more. We are a little concerned about the labor market. And it has been extremely challenging over the last eighteen months. We are confident that we can, that we can staff and serve the, the numbers that we've put out there. And that's one of the reasons why we, why we wanted to do that at that level. Because we know we can staff, we feel strongly we can staff that. But hopefully we'll get our feet under us and be able to, to take on even more capacity in the future. So.
And I really wanna add on to the staffing part. One of our plans for college and career readiness, we're going to recruit from our Billingsley, Otterville, and Prattville and Mulberry for those students because they can start working at age fifteen to come into work. So we'll do have a recruiting process there. And that's under included kind of within the contract for college and career readiness.
I think it's a tremendous, you know, partnership of, you know, when you travel interstate of seeing that, of having it all day, we just lose so many parents that we have good programs at the school, but we can't provide it all day. And using this partnership for the Y, I mean, that closes that gap. I think it, we're gonna see tremendous, tremendous strides. I love to see the partnership and the creativity to, to fill in some of those, those gaps for our parents that are working. And let me throw in for the Y, as we look for, for students, they've got fifteen percent tuition at Troy if you work at the YMCA. So fifteen percent at the Y.
Yes, that's awesome. Okay. Any more questions or comments? Okay. Is there a motion to accept the contract for the summer learning?
I move to accept the YMCA Summer Learning Program contract.
Second.
Okay. We're all in agreement? When you say aye.
Aye.
Board members, I recommend authorizing carmichael engineering to proceed with monitoring and testing services for the Prattville Early Learning Center as presented. This is the soil test, compaction test, things like that. It will be billed through the architect though.
I make a motion to approve.
A second.
Okay. Any questions or comments?
I assume this is mandatory for building, yeah.
You don't have to.
Well.
Should we get in trouble later?
If it falls down, you all have to report.
Forty-five million, so you're probably gonna make sure the concrete, they test the, press, you know, concrete's poor. They come up and test some of that. There's a lot of things they can test. And they also, new bars put in, they can test that. Wanted connection, re-bolt, something like that. A lot of things that go along with it.
We have to, yeah.
That's all you, we have to.
Okay. If we're all in agreement, we can say aye.
Aye.
All right. That's all the business. Just a couple of items on the superintendent's report. We had an incident at Prattville High School today. I think we were texting about what was going on as it was happening. We did have a young man who made a bad choice and is paying the consequences. It was taken care of as quickly as we became aware of it. The administration and the police department, Prattville Police Department responded appropriately. And the school day was not disrupted. Matter of fact, the students, for the most part, probably knew nothing was going on. But along that said, I will need a date, ten days from tomorrow, which I believe is the eleventh. Ms. Addison, is that correct? February eleventh for a coll board meeting.
February eleventh? That's the ten days?
Yes.
I need it before ten days. And you had before ten days, right?
No, I need it.
February eleventh is Saturday.
Yeah, February eleventh is Saturday, so.
Oh, twenty. I skipped the month, I'm sorry. I'm sorry, I did. I was in February.
I like the work ethic, you know?
Um, what time?
Uh, that will be, I would like to do it, uh, probably needs to be at six o'clock.
You said the twenty-fifth?
Is it fine with you, Cal?
I will say that is pending, um, some legal things.
At six.
Six P M, yes.
Okay. Uh, you have in front of you, or not in front of you now, but, uh, this is school board appreciation month. And you have cards and a goodie bag from, uh, students from various schools, our schools in the county. So, uh, you're very much appreciated, even, you've been here for, um, a month and you, and you keep coming back, so, there you go. That's always, that's always a good thing. We are in the middle of, for the first time in a long time, an inventory control process, uh, barcoding, um, items going through. We've done it on paper, but nothing's been barcoded or, um, technology, technological advanced. Ms. Dial is heading that up, uh, it's a massive project, uh, would you like to say anything about that?
It's just a lot, we have a lot of technology that has been purchased with art funds, a lot of Chromebooks, smart, um, smart boards. iPads, and the main thing is to keep, to keep track of them, especially with us going through compliance monitoring. One of the things that they do, they come in and they do, they check our inventory, and if it does not match, we have to pay those funds back. So that is one of the main things, um, like the superintendent said, there has not been a inventory system this detailed. The, um, company that we, um, actually have, their dividend assets, they, they do Jefferson County Mobile. They actually, I mean, they're really quick, go in, do the barcode, we have a scanner system, um, they're going to provide training to our school-based, um, inventory personnel. And they'll come back yearly, um, to do that inventory for us. So it just, you know, we have to work on disposals, they'll take that up, and then it feeds into our, um, system, which is Next Gen and Harris. So it can match up with reports that, uh, Mr. Camero may need to report to and to our CSFO will need to report to. So it's been a, a big task, um, I mean, they work through the weekend, and, um, they know what they're doing, I can tell you that much.
They come in and just boom, boom, boom.
I mean, we're inventory everything, even the stoves, tractors, everything.
Do you inventory teachers' personal items, or they do that themselves?
You, right, yes.
And that is something, I'm glad you said that, a lot of people aren't aware, like if there is a loss at a school. Personal items are not covered, then that would be under your homeowner's insurance, so, so, okay. And the last item I have, we'll talk more about it during the work session. We, if you recall, when we bid or put to bid or sent out for bid the pre-K, early learning center, kindergarten early learning center. We included a couple of alternates, one was just one entrance, and then off of McQueen Smith, and one was two entrances. That just entered, it, it, it entered the, the property, uh, in just a parking lot, okay? The, we're having a little bit of a, uh, issue, we, we've been stopped having, we accepted the bid of having both entrances. But we've been stopped from connecting the second entrance onto McQueen Smith. There's a discussion, or would like to have us to, um, extend J Street to McQueen Smith. Which doesn't, it's not needed to, J Street is the street that comes off of.
Sheila.
Sheila, it's a, um, that's a public, it ends there at, uh, the Smith Center, okay? So, um, the, the city would like for us, and we've talked about this from the beginning, that we really couldn't do it. It's not needed for access to the school, 'cause with the two entrances, you know, would be separate entrances, it would just, it would connect, uh, Sheila. To McQueen Smith, be a pretty much straight shot, which could be a safety issue with people running through there. We did find a, uh, Attorney General's opinion that stated, yes, school boards can, uh, partner with the municipality. If a road needed to be built to gain access to a new school. Didn't mention, um, while we're doing, while we're doing a parking lot to extend the road. So we're working with the city, uh, and probably, you know, we don't, we have X amount of money that we did the bond for. And that's, you know, that's what we have, and that's what, that's what the, the school's gonna be. So, you know, if it comes down to that, we will just have one entrance. And go from there, the second entrance was just a, kind of a luxury, it wasn't necessary. So that's where we are with that, um, as I get more, I will keep y'all updated. But it's nothing to, to vote on right now, um, you know, anything like that, that's just for information. And I will upload to the drive the Attorney General's opinion. That's all I have.
So, let me ask you on that, so the, the one entrance versus two, that's not gonna affect traffic flow, but, car, nothing like that?
No, that was just gonna be an extra, um, we'll have it, the architect did an alternate to where they had the two entrances. And then they went back to the, the drawing for the one that we, would all work.
But there's, in the future, you could do two entrances if ever needed, yeah.
If we extended the, and they, you know, the, the city had said they could go in half, but the Attorney Gen, or Kyle's with us, but the Attorney General's opinion, you know, said, we can't. You know, we can't do that. And we do own the land, um, but not. J Street ends currently in front of the Smith Center, um, then there's a gravel park, you know, there's a park over there, overlooked park.
The J Street ends at our property line.
Yeah.
And, and the Smith Center has access to their facility through our property. J Street ends at our property line, at that last house on J Street.
And there are no houses from Smith Center to McQueen Smith.
And the issue with the city is they're wanting that road extended?
Yes. I mean, but that's. And it would be, I mean, I, we just.
Don't have the money.
No, we don't have the money, I mean, basically, that's, we just don't have the money.
Can't ride a bad chick?
No, but that's all I have.
Okay, well, if there are any more, if everybody is satisfied, if there aren't any more, um, I can have a motion to adjourn the meeting.
And we will adjourn to a work session where no business will be taken or.
Right, yes, no business will be taken and no, no votes will be taken, um, it's just a, a work session.
So I move to adjourn.
My second.
All in favor?
All in favor? Okay, we are adjourned, thank y'all for coming, appreciate it.
Five minute break?